I'd like to call the city of the Ely City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to our December 19th, 2023 regular council meeting, our last meeting of 2023. Casey, could you please help roll? Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Podcast.
I'm here.
Jerome Devens.
Here.
Ryan Callen.
Angela Campbell.
Here.
Adam Biskey.
Here.
And now Marissa. I am here. We do have a quorum to conduct business, so we'll go ahead and move ahead. I need a motion to approve our minutes from December 5th, 2023 regular council meeting, December 5th, 2023 truth in taxation meeting, and December 13th, 2023 special council meeting. Motion by Jerome, supported by Adam. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have no additions or omissions to tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything they need to add or omit? Any additions or omissions? Seeing none, we have an agenda for this evening. First, under Mayor's report in our agenda on page 14, I have Tree City USA proclamation. Let me quickly read that as quick as I can for everyone to hear. The official proclamation is, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special date to be set aside for the planting planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperatures, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Heidi Umerza, Mayor of the City of Ely, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2023, we're a little late on that, but that's all right, as Arbor Day in the city of Ely, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to deepen their heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So, I think we do a very good job of promoting trees, planting trees, and celebrating trees as we are in the middle of a national forest, Minnesota forest, so our true tree proclamation. And we are a tree city, so we have been for 10 years now, 10 years. All right. Moving on, why do we have so many people here? I'm really excited about this. We've been wanting to do this for a while, so thank you, Coach Mc, Coach Megan Wadham for coming here with all these wonderful athletes. So, I think I'm gonna have the girls volleyball team come up. Can I do that? And have them stand, and I'm just gonna come around. How about that? So, the girls volleyball team, stand up here in front. I will talk super loud time. Is that all right? Up front. So, everyone can see you. It'll be easier that way. Right? So, these wonderful ladies made it to state last year, this year they made it to state and are the consolation champs, and I am so proud of you for working hard, digging deep, and making it to state. So, the city of Ely would like to recognize you. So, whereas the girls volleyball team at Ely Memorial High School won the Class A consolation championship at the state tournament, and whereas the girls volleyball team has represented the school and community at the state tournament two years in a row, and whereas the team's hard work and tenacity has resulted in sections championship and the Class A consolation championship at the state of Minnesota, at the state tournament, and whereas the mayor and city council would like to express their congratulations to the girls volleyball team for this great accomplishment. Now therefore, I, Heidi Umerza, Mayor of Ely, of the city of Ely, Minnesota, do hereby give the captain a key to the city as a small token of their appreciation and the recipe certificate. So, congratulations, we're proud of you, keep on eating. Congratulations. And Louis and Hannah. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you all, and, all right, we'll go swim, right? Thank you. A few other things happened this past couple weeks. I know we've addressed a few things, but we had our Rams annual meeting. I'm not sure if Paul would like to say a few words hour later. Congratulations, you made it onto the board again, so.
Thanks for the news there. Nice to have a full contingent at that annual meeting. There are a lot of people there, that's a good sight. I don't have to add anything.
Anybody else otherwise? We have a lot of meetings, and go ahead.
I just want to comment on the Rams meeting. It is great to see Paul Pelletier's enthusiasm and energy that he brings to that position. I think that he will continue the way we've seen with the last two executive directors. It's very impressive.
It was fun to see him walk around and greet everyone, and I forget that he has been there for such a short time. You're right, good point on. Also, I did mention this before, but Harold and I did go down to, last Wednesday, my goodness, less than a week ago, down to, down to Virginia Mountain, I guess, and we did talk about the agency services situation, there was a hearing, and talking about the dire situation that is basically in Northeastern Minnesota, Greater Minnesota, from funding to what is happening all across, basically, Iron Range, from here to Hiving to International Falls. It was eye-opening, and not great to know that we're not alone in this situation, but nice to know that hopefully we got some people that are in a better place and position than we are listening, so hopefully some results will be heard, and there are some of the stories that will be heard, and we'll see some results this legislative session. That is not the answer, but it is a Band-Aid fix. I think we all know that. All right, anything else? All right, moving on to consent agenda. Need a motion for A and B, or individually? Jerome?
Remove A and B.
Is there support? Support by Angela, any discussion? I would just like to once again encourage people, council members, to go to either the elected, to either of the institute programs put out by the League of Minnesota Cities. They always have great information, and no matter if you get in for a year, or 10, or 15, I've always learned something when I have gone to those events, so, especially in these changing times. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There are no requests to appear. Moving on to committee reports. Angela?
Heritage Preservation Commission, a recommendation from the HPC to authorize the HPC to enter into a contract with Movie Tree Media LLC to provide video and oral history services for Memorial High School's centennial anniversary celebration at a cost not to exceed $8,500. To direct the city attorney to assist with the content and form of the contract, the funding of the services of Movie Tree Media will come from the $10,000 state legacy grant.
And that's a motion? A recommendation? A motion to the council? Yes. Is there support? Support by Paul? Any discussion? Go ahead, Paul.
Just a quick question. Who is Movie Tree? You know their name?
This is a vendor that applied, and I believe he's from Southern Minnesota.
Okay, thanks.
To do our oral histories, and very well-accomplished, and very excited about, you know, our project.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else, Cheryl? Okay, tree board?
Nothing to report from the tree board at this time. The minutes are in the packet. We will be bringing forward some information on the 10-year anniversary of being a Tree City USA in the future.
It's just awkward. All right, park and rec.
Yes, park and rec. As a, you'll find the minutes in, once again, in the agenda, in the packet. We're currently, excuse me. We are currently posting a public notice. There's an area down at the east end of Miners Lake where people park, and they use the, that area to access the east end of the lake, and we'd like to be able to accommodate them, to help get the cars off the road, so we're looking at clearing a small parking area suitable for about a dozen cars, just for safety and accessibility purposes. We've already had a dock donated for use down in that area, so we thought, in the mooloo of the public's perception of how things were managed, that it may serve as a gesture of thoughtfulness and consideration to put out a public notice and give anybody who may have some feedback a chance to respond before we make the motion proceed. And that's it for parks and rec at this time.
Library, that's me. Minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, Rachel, I can throw them to her some later on. We, I can address them as well. Ely reports. Adam?
I was unable to make this past meeting, but looking through the minutes, which you'll find in the packet, the motion was, was to just change the meeting time. Later on in the agenda, we'll be accepting that reservation, I believe, as well, so we can address that at that time.
So, are you going to take on the recommendation to change the meeting time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I will.
Is there a support for that? Support by Angela, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else, Cheryl? Okay, tree board?
Nothing to report from the tree board at this time. The minutes are in the packet. We will be bringing forward some information on the 10-year anniversary of being a Tree City USA in the future.
It's just awkward. All right, park and rec.
Yes, park and rec. As a, you'll find the minutes in, once again, in the agenda, in the packet. We're currently, excuse me. We are currently posting a public notice. There's an area down at the east end of Miners Lake where people park, and they use the, that area to access the east end of the lake, and we'd like to be able to accommodate them, to help get the cars off the road, so we're looking at clearing a small parking area suitable for about a dozen cars, just for safety and accessibility purposes. We've already had a dock donated for use down in that area, so we thought, in the mooloo of the public's perception of how things were managed, that it may serve as a gesture of thoughtfulness and consideration to put out a public notice and give anybody who may have some feedback a chance to respond before we make the motion proceed. And that's it for parks and rec at this time.
Library, that's me. Minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, Rachel, I can throw them to her some later on. We, I can address them as well. Ely reports. Adam?
I was unable to make this past meeting, but looking through the minutes, which you'll find in the packet, the motion was, was to just change the meeting time. Later on in the agenda, we'll be accepting that reservation, I believe, as well, so we can address that at that time.
So, are you going to take on the recommendation to change the meeting time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I will.
Is there a support for that? Support by Angela, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we should borrow cars. Al, did you want to add anything?
No, just the minutes now are in this packet, so you can see that, but we addressed everything at our special council meeting last week.
All right. Are there any other committee meetings we need to discuss this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to departmental reports. For treasure.
The only update I have tonight is we are trying to get the skating rink open, if winter ever does arrive. We have been flying on the nights that weather has permitted. Looking at the extended forecast, it's not looking too promising, but we are hoping, hopefully after Christmas, to have the rink open. I was just looking at forecasts, again, it looks like rain forecasted on Christmas, so, so just stay tuned. That'll be on our Facebook page and also on our website. You know, we do like to extend the hours during the Christmas break for the kids when they're out of school, from 10 to 8 during the weekdays, so hopefully that'll happen here after Christmas.
And if people want to find out, it will be on the website, as always. Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
I'm assuming you're just gonna lighten the season on the other end and we skating it down. Does that work?
That would be great. If you can build enough ice to make it last till June, I don't think many would enjoy that, but certainly.
I like that. I like that they can follow. Anything else, Cheryl?
No.
Are you? Archie?
Good evening. Since the last time we met, Ely Fire has responded to 12 medical calls and no fire calls, so it continues to be a good thing, although sometimes a log average keeps me up in any moment, on periods of time. We also, we also hosted our annual Christmas party in December. We had probably the best turnouts that I can remember ever for retirees, a lot of retirees that showed up, so that was, that was really fun. We have our final training of the year this Thursday, and actually last night, Erin Kelly, our newest member, started her training for firefighter one and firefighter two. Unfortunately, that training has to be held on the Solway, she'll have to do it, but much of it will be online, she'll have some power weekends out there to master things on the skills, but we're happy to get, happy to get Erin started, and we should have her completed before her one-year anniversary, which will allow us to take her off probationary status. That's all I have.
Any questions for Archie? Thank you. Library director, Rachel.
Well, since the weather has been nicer, we have managed to change the story for all of Arizona Trail, so if you are out there walking, we've got a new book out, It's Someone Walks By by Polly Carlson-Boyles, who actually found it before I could let her know that her book was out there, it was just tickled, had to come in the library, tell us all about it. Tomorrow, on Wednesday the 20th, at 3:00 p.m., we'll be having another one of our Hey It's a Holiday programs. It will, is International Game Day tomorrow, so if you want to come in and play some games at the library, starting at 3:00, we welcome you to come. Coming up, we've got some holiday hours that will be closed, so we'll be closed Monday and Tuesday, the 25th and 26th of December, and the following Monday and Tuesday, January 1st and January 2nd. However, during that period, the library board has agreed to double the number of movies you can check out per card, so we don't want anybody to be staying home without any recreational movie watching. We know that there are a lot of people that do count on that during the holidays because they don't have anywhere else to go, so we'd like to give them a chance to check out a few more, so you can do eight per card, including the seasons of, you know, various TV shows, so if you really want to binge, now is the time. And just to let people know, our first program in the new year coming up will be a Mark Twain Kahoot, so if you are a Mark Twain reader, come in and sign up for our trivia contest on that, which will be on the first week of January. That's what I've got.
Hey, Rachel. Please do.
Not much tonight, just wanted to thank you guys again for our recruitment and retention plan that we, was approved at the last council meeting, but you get a lot of positive feedback from the community and throughout the United States, I guess, at the AP, and I've done in Seattle Times and a few other places, so we've been receiving a few inquiries. Unfortunately, some are not going to be eligible just because of requirements for our state, but we have received, I believe, three before applications since we did that, so that's all I have.
I've got a lot of, well, just my friends in the state of Minnesota who I know that sent me emails or text messages, I thought it was a pretty clever idea, so.
I think it's definitely drawing a lot of positives.
Thank you. Any, that was everything? All right, thank you. So, the attorney is not here, doesn't need to be, we know she won't be here, city engineer, communications. Great news from Happy Days, I just wanted people to make sure that they read that in our agenda. So, I'd like to thank all of you for our help and support to make that happen, just on the track that they're on. A fun aside, Allison Hyman, her, what would be her brother-in-law, and my son Josh went to Happy Days together at the same time, and Megan and I were, I believe, on the Happy Days board as well, together, so another generation passing it off, but for those of you out there who can't read it, we are, they're in the process of moving forward and looking forward to, we're excited to expand our center in 2024 to a newly renovated building in partnership with Ely Area Community Foundation. They will offer full-time childcare for infants, toddlers, and preschoolers with up to 46 children in the community served. So, our capacity will be more than double, and we'll employ eight full-time staff. So, the city of Ely has helped, some people in this room have more than helped, and I'm glad that the city of Ely has been definitely helping to make that happen, so this is an exciting moment, and if anybody has anything to donate, or wants to make monetary donations, they're definitely open to that as well, as the letter suggests, so. We also have a correspondence from the Ely Area Food Shelf. It sounds like they had a wonderful year, and then, as always, we have our committee seats. Paul, did you want to?
I was just going to comment on the food shelf letter.
Please do, yes.
That second, our third paragraph describes their need for donations, just given the fact that they aren't able to access food from the food bank.
Thank you, yes.
So, I encourage everybody to help out in that situation, donate to the food shelf.
Yes, go ahead.
And I'd like, and I'd like to add to that, too, and I'm glad Paul had brought that up. So, reading the letter, I was very surprised on the fact that their monthly food purchases are up 400%, and then on the back of the letter, it cites some thank yous that they issued and some highlights, and that the COVID grant through the city of Ely provided for building-wide heating and cooling to ensure consistent year-round safe food storage. I'm wondering, I don't have the background on this, if that COVID grant expired, if we ran out of money, it can be continued?
Go ahead, Harold, thank you.
We had one time allotment of money that we had distributed to businesses in the community, and then we did an additional supplemental round for nonprofits, to give all the nonprofits an opportunity. ECR requested funding, the food shelf requested funding, I can't remember offhand others that may have, I think Happy Days may have, so that was how that was distributed, and all the money was, all the money was given out. So, that was one time allotment.
So, in, in the, but prior to that, had the city donated any, any special services or offerings to the food shelf as far as assistance?
I don't believe, and I, I've only been on budget for a short time, but in my years at the council, I don't remember the requesting, making any requests either.
I just, I felt it necessary to address that, with the number of 482 individuals utilizing those services, I, I need to know if that's something that we could pursue in the future, if, if they needed it.
So, there's a couple, which I understand, so. Agreed.
Thank you.
As always, we have our 2024 committee seats that are expiring. Those people whose seats aren't expiring have been notified, I'm assuming, I know through ours we have. Go ahead, Harold.
Yes, just as a reminder to those that are on committees or chair committees, you do have committee members that have terms that are up, but they have the ability to continue to serve. We do need to receive a letter or email at least from those individuals, so then those can be brought forward as well as those who applicants to fill those positions on the councils, boards, and commissions. It's kind of a self-explanatory, you can see the term, terms actually when they were put on, and then how many terms they've served, so majority of the committees are three, consecutive three-year terms, some others are staggered, to get staggering within the membership. I think if you look at, at Park and Rec projects, those are two-year terms, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact our office, we do have the information concerning these committees' roles and duties.
This is the list like we did most every year, though, correct, Harold? Any questions? All right, are we ready to raise some cases, bills? All right. Anybody like to make a motion? Jerome?
We'll make a motion, we, we, A and B.
A and B, is there support? Support? Adam, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, just as a reminder to those that are on committees or chair committees, you do have committee members that have terms that are up, but they have the ability to continue to serve. We do need to receive a letter or email at least from those individuals so then those can be brought forward as well as those who applicants to fill those positions on the councils, boards, and commissions. It's kind of a self-explanatory. You can see the term, terms actually when they were put on and then how many terms they've served. So majority of the committees are three consecutive three-year terms. Some others are staggered to get staggering within the membership. I think if you look at Park and Rec projects, those are two-year terms. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact our office. We do have the information concerning these committees' roles and duties.
This is a list like we did most every year though, correct, Harold? Any questions? All right, are we ready to make some case and bills? All right. Anybody like to make a motion? Jerome?
We'll make a motion. We, we, A and B?
Is there support? Support? Adam? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There's no old business, we can move on to new business. Who is to say, direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance for the local housing trust fund? Need a motion? Moved by Adam, supported by Paul? Discussion? Harold, can you start this off with this?
Sure, this would provide the ability or the availability of a hundred fifty thousand dollars in grant funds to the HRA to start a housing trust fund. So what they can utilize is levy dollars that they've been levying for some time that has built an account that would be used as a match. And with the hundred fifty thousand, then they can start some of the initiatives they've started. So we did meet with Minnesota Housing Partnership. They were here last week. And it sounded like a pretty, pretty great opportunity to bring in some other funds that weren't, you know, otherwise necessarily available. So the, the plan would be in January, have two readings on this ordinance so that it would be in place. And then it gives the HRA the ability to do that.
Questions, both of you?
So, I was, I was reading through the Minnesota Statute 462 C-16. We've got a site here in this ordinance and I was wondering if there was any consideration in creating a regional trust through a joint powers agreement or if this is something we strictly want to pursue as standalone as the city?
I think right now, just to establish it as a local housing trust, because I don't know who our joint powers members could be. If there's others that want to join force on it to maximize the grant potential, that could be something down the road. We will be utilizing the county's HRA's bonding capacity for any housing project moving forward. So I don't know if that'd be necessary or not, but that's something we can certainly consider in the future.
Harold, as I understand it, that housing trust fund gives the HRA flexibility to get involved in different kinds of projects? And that the IRR being maybe interested in doing a housing trust fund for the range of the tax range?
I think that's been part of the discussions right now. They have. Commissioner Rukavina has put together a program for housing projects. Very interested in the projects we've been proposing. So this is just another piece of that puzzle. So the Minnesota Housing Partnership that Joe Iller, executive director, applied for, received and they came last week. So I think that's going to be key to how we put these projects together. We were talking about workforce housing. There's also some discussion of housing that's utilizing tax credits that might bring additional interest for, for housing projects. So I look forward to their report here, probably after Christmas, sometime in January, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, look forward to our discussion of that in January then. All right. In-kind services for the Wolf Track Classic that will be held on February 25th, 2024. Motion for the in-kind services, Al, supported by Jerome. Any discussion?
The only thing I want to make sure they work with Harold to get the things taken care of to make sure everything's going to be fine.
Are they saying the services, the in-kind services as always?
Same as always.
Same as always? Now work with you as always? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, consider the approval of the Green Mining Company LLC off sale cannabinoid dealer license at 43 East Camp Street, pending proper paperwork, background check, insurance, and fees. Need a motion? Motion by Al, supported by Paul. Harold? Do we need to know anything about this before we vote on it?
It's just new business following their existing guidelines, requirements, and licensing.
All right. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Have you heard, Harold, that when the possibility, that's the old bowling center, correct? And is it when they're going to open it all?
I think this is part of their business plan. So this is part of, part of the project, part of the business. So, so yes, this is.
A step in the right direction, is that what I want to think, if I assume that? All right.
I'd like to say thank you because we, some of the, see adults in town would love bowling. And we, be a lot of people there, but it'd be nice if they'd be, be open again.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, this is a big one, people for retirement notice for Mike Popish. Oh, all those in favor?
D.
D.
D. Oh, I am sorry, I couldn't. It looks the same thing. I'm sorry. Consider the approval of the Green Mining Company LLC tobacco license application at 43 East Camp Street, pending proper paperwork, insurance, and fees. This is what happens when I have someone right next to me that's gone. Keeps me alive, can I say? Motion by Paul, supported by Al, thank you both of you. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry about that. All right, moving on. Now, retirement notice for Mike Popish. Mike's last day with the city dealing will be on January 12th, 2024. Forty-three years of service. Wow. Need a motion to accept his retirement. Motion by Jerome, supported by Angela. Any discussion?
I'd like to add that to resent the letter, thank you for his years of service for the city.
Are you going to read that first?
I'd like to believe rather you wouldn't read it then.
So we'll have something on Monday.
I, I think there's something else in the works, I'll be honest. I think, I don't know. Anything else? Go ahead.
I have this bad feeling I should vote against this, just to be real. Couple. Couple of people that way.
Mike, Mike got the pleasure of working with, with the, pleasure of working with a few of my children himself. Probably well-reserved retirement. Just going to say. All right. If we don't see him again or if he doesn't hear, whatever, we appreciate all of 43 of those years. Hopefully we'll get the chance to say a few words to him in real life. If we approve this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Regardingly. All right, here we go. All right. Approve Walker, Jerome, and Honey, understanding of services that they will provide to the city of Uli for the year ending December 31st, 2023. Need a motion? Motion by Angela, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Is there more on it this year? I feel like this is longer than I had been asked.
It gets longer.
Okay. And so it wasn't just me, I thought it was like a lot longer. Any other, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, 2023 dash 33, resolution approving the city of Uli budget for the fiscal year 2024. Need a motion? Moved by Angela, supported by Al. Any discussion? This is basically approving our budget for next year. This is something that we have been working on, all of you have been working on since, over a long time. Putting in, putting in the fine touches since August and fine tuning it today, essentially. Al, did you want to say any words?
I, I just want to thank our city staff for, for working hard to make, to be able to meet our goals. You know, I mean, in the budget committee, we did try to help, help guide them, but they, they stayed at that, at that line, which, which I'm sure was not easy. Between them and our, our state representatives with, with LGA contribution, we're very fortunate.
All right, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, 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 resolution, sorry. Casey, House Member Al Horstman?
Yes.
Podcast?
Yes.
Jerome Devaux?
Yes.
Ryan Callen? Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Bisby?
Yes.
And Mira Marza?
Yes. Our resolution has passed. We have a budget administered. Resolution, 2020, 20, 2023 dash 34, resolution approving and adopting the final tax levy collectible for 2024. Motion by Jerome, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Any discussion? This is one that keeps your life going. Once again, thank everyone for helping on this one.
House Member Al Horstman?
Yes.
Podcast?
Yes.
Jerome Devaux?
Yes.
Ryan Callen? Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Bisby?
Yes.
And Mira Marza?
Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you all. This is one of the lower ones we've had for 21, so thank you all. And residential rehab loan for James of R. E. Lorenston, Lorenstonson at 122 East Harvest Street for up to $10,000 for a new energy efficient propane harness pending proper paperwork fees and to direct attorney to work with the applicant and proceed with the loan application. Need a motion? Jerome, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. There are no people for open forum. I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. And peace. Your turn.